All right, now it's seven o'clock, call this meeting the void of Alderman to order.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Wobbe?
Here.
Alderman Hudson?
Here.
Alderman Lee?
Here.
All right, we have Forum Stadium, if there's a bid, can't take place.
Alleged to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a question. On page eighteen, treasurer's report. I assume that's just for the month of January. Is that correct? Page thirteen, doctor's question's report.
Yes. Uh, oh, well, it's not for the year, it's just for the month.
Just for the month.
Yes, and they are not due until June, so we have to warn them in June, July, and August.
One of sixty.
Awesome. You only see one of sixty?
Yep. That's all I can see.
Make a motion to consent agenda as published.
Have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published, follows the fair of say aye.
Aye.
Council table over twelve fifty.
Make motion to approve the council table over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in the grand total amount of three hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred and four dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second. Have a motion second to approve council table over twelve fifteen, the amount of three hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred and four dollars and eighty-three cents, follows the fair of say aye.
Aye.
All right. Appointing an emergency management director, they talked about it earlier, and we push this one back to, uh, next month, sorry?
To March. Uh, currently on our list of committees, it shows Terry Castle as our emergency management director, he is no longer within county emergency management. So we would be appointing Tom Hurley, that was the letter that we were supposed to get tonight, we chose to push it back to March.
Okay, this time I'll open the floor for comments from citizens. If you have a comment, please post to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Linda Borman, eight hundred Jason Court. Okay, Socket people just came through our yards, and now I understand that the other telecommunications communication company is coming in to town also. Are they gonna run more cables, do we know, or are they gonna use the same sleeves? But I have to tell you, my front yard, my ten feet, is starting to get really crowded because that's where the electric, the gas, the water, two phone lines charter. And now Socket, and if there's other companies coming through, they're gonna start giving me land back.
They're gonna be coming through.
Do we as a city give them permission to come through, or do they just arbitrarily come through?
They're using utility easements to go through.
But they don't have to have permission to do it?
My knowledge.
Well, it's getting to be ridiculous, people. Really getting bad.
It's federal law.
It's federal law.
But I've got charter, I've got two phone company lines, I've got Socket, and if I get this other one, that's where my water, my gas, all that runs. I'm getting real tired of it, and they're tearing up sidewalks, they're tearing out sod. And I know they're supposed to be coming back and fixing all that, but...
And they, they have promised, and what they have done before the weather got bad, had, they've done a good job on.
Well, they aren't now, 'cause that ground is frozen, and they're just tearing the heck out of it.
Well, right now, they're just trying to get it smoothed out the best they can, and then they'll come back and do it. They are keeping records of it, and we're trying to keep records too, if there is something...
Because they broke off the end of our sidewalk on, between our lot and our, the lot that we live on and the extra lot that we have.
Okay.
They did that in the last day, so, thank you.
Do they have to replace sod when there was sod down, will we get to pay to put sod in?
Yeah.
They better, or they'll start carrying a gun.
Thank you, Linda. All right. Any more comments from citizens?
Yes, sir.
My name's Eric Kyle Oski, I live on Campbell Street, it's a new subdivision. Mm-hmm. Asking about a paved road. Um, I know it's not in the budget, I just wonder if there's any chance of, is it gonna be on the, any timeline to get paved, or...
Well, that's what we need to discuss as board, and try and come up with a solution that works best for everybody.
If, you'd said before, if, uh, if I got everybody involved on the street, do we pay for ourselves to lift a curb and gutter?
Uh, the, yeah, the requirement is to put curb and gutter.
Okay.
But I'll ask Heather to reach out to the USDA, to, they, sometimes they have grants available for paving streets and stuff like that.
Okay.
So, we're gonna research that and get that information.
Okay.
So, and there are ways that it could probably be done without putting curb and gutter in.
Yeah, but I, you know, the city code says they have to have curb and gutter, so...
But it isn't in this street.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't?
No.
Allen Street doesn't have curb and gutter.
Right.
I mean, I know it's consistent rule already established.
So, I believe it'd probably be done without putting curb and gutter in.
Okay, let, let...
Of the institutional member, I believe unless it's changed, the new subdivisions planted, the streets are part of the improvement requirements and curb and gutters required.
That's, yeah.
But for old planted streets, before there were subdivision regulations, such as Campbell, Ivy Street, a couple others, there's a section of city code that talks about improvements, said if local property owners wanted to do it, this is the standard they gotta do. Otherwise, the city may or may not get to it by and by.
Okay.
And those standards, I don't recall anything about curb and gutter, it's...
Yeah.
It's the type of base and the amount of pavement, and the minimum width.
What, as far as if it's asphalt, would that still, same, same thing goes?
Uh, I can't recall, there's a six or eight.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's even ways of changing some of that, but considering you've already got a good base in there, but there's a rock road, is there, you don't necessarily have to tear it out and put in six inches of asphalt.
How about the width, is it, is there, I know everybody else has certain codes on widths of road, is it twenty-two or twenty-four? I don't know what we have now, I just know that's, you know, because we've got the metal boxes and...
You're probably closer to twenty-two, I don't think it's full of twenty-four on that. I was trying to think when we laid water lines across it, I think we split a hundred-foot row, and it worked out just fine, one main was, which is just on the edge up into the easement, so...
If I was to get the builder back involved, would that be something we can discuss, and...
Yeah, I don't know, I, I mean, you could always talk to the builder.
Right.
Uh, but I don't know what his actual obligation is gonna be for that.
Well, he doesn't have an obligation.
Yeah.
He falls under the, uh, this was already in place, and so it wasn't required to meet the current standards, because the road was already there.
You guys talked about, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, sir. We'll, we'll, we will be discussing that.
Okay, I do appreciate it, thank you. And I'll, I'll talk with the builder again to, he says he's got specs and plans to have it done, so, I would, you know, he told, he told me to attend a meeting to find out something.
Okay.
But I do appreciate it, guys, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any more comments from citizens? Close that, and open the floor for a public hearing regarding the proposed expansion for, for the exception for Randolph Road.
In your packet is the recommendation from the Board of Adjustments, um, for the exception.
I'm wondering how this, why would he, uh, uh, exception, because I've never seen this done anywhere else before. I, I know we...
Now, to answer your question, this is Sydney, if I can join in, I believe I had sent around to Heather, and I thought to you as well, an exception basically accepts out a certain action of the city through, um, application of any sort of plan, or any sort of zoning or construction requirements as it builds through. So, they, I did find, and I did send, um, ground for what is known as an exception. So Missouri does recognize exceptions, it's not a variance, it's that this particular process, this road, would be accepted out from the application of the ordinance. And I also indicated to Heather, and I believe the board has been made aware, that any time you accept out a certain construction activity, it does require a super majority vote of the Board of Aldermen. So it does require higher standards, but an exception is legally recognized in the state of Missouri.
So if we did Roland Road and didn't build it to the requirements, then that was wrong?
Well, I mean, it's, I, I don't necessarily, I cannot opine about whether it was right or wrong, I wasn't the city attorney at the time, but if the city did not want to build out the road, or a road, based on its, its own self-imposed requirements for any construction, it would have to seek an, an exception for future construction, does that make sense?
Well, it's hard to know, but I mean, the, this is in the subdivision regulations, and we're not subdividing property, so was it applying, what's the definition?
Well, I think it's odd, addressed to Heather too, it is an odd place that it is placed, because you are correct, um, Alderman Borman, that we're not subdividing here, and it is found in the subdivision regulations. However, in reading the actual ordinance, it does not specifically apply to subdivisions. So again, since I'm not for sure what the prior city attorney was thinking when he or she placed it there, the overall language in the ordinance applies across, um, general applications, not specific to subdivisions. So maybe either the city attorney previously, or even the codification company just decided to place it under there, I'm not for sure exactly why it is placed under subdivisions.
Well, it usually is, in most subdivision regulations, uh, subterranean streets.
And rather than duplicating, you know, curb and gutter.
Well, in small towns, I mean, they don't have standards per se, for most things, and so the only place you can cover it is in city, uh, in subdivision, which is allowed for in the state statute.
So, I, I don't know what happened on Roland Road and why that was built the way it was, um, but we're not talking about Roland Road right now, we're talking about Randolph Road. Understand that, uh, Alderman Borman, you have some other questions for Heather this past week?
Uh, well, I've, I've got a couple of questions now.
Yeah.
One is, uh, state statute says that, uh, before, uh, extending or vacating roads, there has to be a public, uh, has to go before the fire and zoning commission. Lynn, do you remember, did we do that before fire and zoning?
Uh, it was, it was made a part of the comprehensive plan.
Can you give me the statute reference so that I can look at that as you're talking?
Uh, eighty-nine three eighty and eighty-nine four sixty.
Eighty-nine three eighty, okay, I just wanna be able to pull that up.
But Lynn says we did do that before. Did they build before fire and zoning. Okay, the other thing is, is that the, the engineer was talking about doing a twenty-five foot right-of-way at where the center line of the street was, and there's forty foot on the one side of the street. On our comprehensive plan, this is shown as a subarterial street, which requires an eighty-foot right-of-way, which is why that road was designed to be on the center line of the, uh, the center line was designed to be on the section line. The city kept forty feet from the land it sold, and then forty feet was to come from the other side to make this a subarterial street. Randolph Road is designated on our comprehensive plan as being a subarterial street. This is a proposed extension of that, it would not make sense to go from a subarterial to something less.
I think we've discussed that quite, quite a bit in the last couple weeks, um, and...
So we're gonna go against our comprehensive plan and not make this a subarterial street?
No, I didn't say that. At this point, I think, uh, the council is voted on this, uh, street to make it a twenty-four foot wide street, would potentially go up to thirty-eight foot wide street. And I don't know what the arterial, subarterial discussion is about right now.
It has to do with the right-of-way, right?
Okay. So, what's the right-of-way?
So if we're gonna, if we're going to have to go against our, which is in, that, that is in our subdivision code also, so if we're going to go against the subdivision code and build something less than a thirty-eight foot wide street that the code requires, don't we have to exempt out the requirement for a forty, or an eighty-foot wide street?
The ordinance exempts out Randolph Road from all of the requirements, it's not just the width.
The design for Randolph, that the engineer stands apart, is centered on the section line, correct?
Right now, it's not.
He presumes you will get the other forty feet.
They were designing it by an offset from the section line, using that's right.
But that is something that we are going to address with them, and put it, to put it back on the center line, that's something that Alderman Borman's brought up, and that is something that I think that we decided that we wanted to do to make sure that there was enough room for the utilities.
Right.
Whenever we expand it out thirty-eight feet.
So, all right, what if, continue to make it a arterial street?
Subarterial.
Subarterial street. Another question that Alderman Borman had was the, uh, removing the ditch on the west side of the proposed road, and removing the pipes under Roland Road?
No.
And the north end of...
Oh, under Roland, yes.
Yes, and then the north end of Randolph Road. I thought we talked about that, and Phil said that there was no drainage issues, uh, the last rain, and that, that the city would be, uh, okay with doing the, uh, grading and graders.
Yes, and that's something that we would...
Yeah.
Talk to the engineers about, they, they were fine with that as long as we were going to work on the drainage on the west side.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is that north intersection, but we went ahead and got a map of the entire thing so that we could see all the way down. This one does not have it on the center line, does not have the middle of the road on the center line, we would request that they change that. It will change the amount of, um, right-of-way that they have to get on the west side. And then there was some discussion before about the south, about the utilities at the, at the, at twenty-two, um, Highway twenty-two intersection, can you scroll down to that? So this shows what their plans are there.
No, that's...
It's just this way.
Yeah, there you go.
They would have that transition that's required by MoDOT to transition to Randolph Road.
Yes.
It'll be twenty-four foot wide all the way from twenty-two to Roland.
That would be the base bid, right?
Yes.
Do we have the option to fully curb and gutter it?
Yes.
I think that would require a vote of the board, if that's what you want to include in your bid, your construction bid, because everyone is...
Yeah, base bid, twenty-four foot wide.
Right, and that's all we would need.
That's what was approved, so...
Right.
And that's what we need to do, but if we wanted to include the option to do a thirty-eight foot wide street with curbing gutter from twenty-two, up just past Remington, I think that we can include that, we can include... It's really whatever you all want to include, but all we've made a decision on is that for sure twenty-four foot is...
I wanna see the, the design for a thirty-eight foot street, I mean, we're paying for the design of this twice already.
Yes, but...
I don't wanna pay for another design.
Yes, but, we have not asked them to redesign anything since our last meeting, until we have a better idea of what we are doing. I did not go back to them and say, now we want this, and now we want this, we've done that a lot. It's racked up our engineering costs, but we have not, we have not done that since our last meeting. Yes, that is something that we will do, yes, that will happen, but that has not happened yet until we have, until I know for sure what the board wants to do.
Yeah.
So here, here's my question, we've got this proposed exception in front of us. Don's brought up concern on, and Don, you know a lot more about city codes and what types of roads this and that are than I do, so I might even try to rephrase what you said. But if we go, if we approve this exception based on the recommendation that we have sitting in front of us, does that null and void anything we've done? Does this exception actually impact that at this point? Because that's what we're talking about right now, is this exception, right?
Right.
That's what this public hearing was for.
Sydney, did you hear Alderman Hudson's question?
Yeah, I couldn't, he was, I think he was on way, can you repeat what he said? I was trying really hard to listen to it, and I, I didn't catch it all.
He is asking that if, if they go ahead, if they do approve this exception for Randolph Road tonight, does that make any work that we've done, or any of the design work before that null and void, I mean...
Or even of the conversation that Don was just having about the two different types of roads, does that impact that portion of the, uh, what we do going forward?
What happens at this point is if the board decides to vote to accept out Randolph Road from the requirements of the ordinance, all that does is that any design or engineering requirements for future build-outs of the road do not be, need to be in accordance with that section of the ordinance. So, my understanding is, is that the previous engineering documents would still suffice.
It, it's not to say that we can't go back to that at some point in the future by adding curb and gutter, but it does put in the requirement that we do so.
I was referring more to the two different types of roads you were talking about. You had bring in an additional concern that hadn't been brought up in a previous meeting, that I, at least that I was part of, I wasn't one of the meetings. Uh, so if I'm going based on this exception, there's maybe some other questions, but...
Right, it doesn't say we shouldn't do that, except for the gap.
Does that, does this discussion truly on the exception that's in front of us today?
No, shouldn't be.
Okay.
All right. Is that, was that? Anybody need to see that anymore? Any other questions on the, so I have to go back to the top.
One quick question, go back, go back real quick. From twenty-two to the other road, are we gonna make it completely right to that point?
Well, that's, we mean completely right, thirty-eight feet wide.
Right, right width, we're not gonna do that either.
That would be an alternate, that would be an alternate.
Also.
Yes, yeah.
If the board goes to...
And the state will allow us to do that.
State of there, they do, we all go right.
Well, I mean, we're going on to the right.
On their right-of-way, we will be state standards, period.
Yeah, once we get off of twenty-two, we'll make that transition according to MoDOT's rules, that go down to a twenty-four foot wide street.
Soon as we get out of their right-of-way.
So the base, the base package includes being compliant with MoDOT regulations going to a twenty-four...
We, we can't do anything less than MoDOT regulations at the start on twenty-two. So, once we get off of that MoDOT right-of-way, that's when we can do our twenty-four foot wide street.
Why, how far is that, the right-of-way from MoDOT?
Fifty foot to the center line?
Fifty foot to the center line.
Fifty foot to the center line, yeah.
So is the MoDOT entrance gonna be thirty, but curbs are gonna be twenty-four?
It should be a thirty-eight, I believe.
I didn't know if we were gonna make it...
I think by the time they do their fan radius out there, you're gonna have that, for a need.
So then it'll, eventually, we won't have to mess with MoDOT again when we go back to curb and gutter.
My suggestion would be to have it, MoDOT requires or not that we go with curb and gutter, uh, up to the right-of-way line, so we don't have to deal with MoDOT again.
Yeah, please them and get them off the table, I guess that's the first time too, that's what I...
They're gonna be there step by step.
Oh, yeah, they'll be there.
Oh, yeah, they'll, they'll make sure we get it right.
Guaranteed.
Yeah.
Sarah, could you go up about halfway on that, where that swale is, we stopped the first time. Right about there. There's a sewer easement that runs right through that swale, and I talked to Ron Stewart and Landon, who's there also, Lynn's been saying for years, do not forget this, we need to run a sewer line for future use to the north, we've run that, there's a manhole base that right underneath the electric line, really. Lynn and I were talking today, and I think he's got a good point, if we can get a shot from there, up there where it's gonna cross Roland Road, we need to stub a pipe underneath that'll meet grade later on, that we can tie into, but have it already in place whenever we do what we're gonna do up there, which would be another reason to maybe pave up there at that intersection for now. But get the thing across there, have it in, mark it so we can keep up with it, and have that done, that'll take care of the future use going to the north.
Yeah.
We've got to get that in, so...
Yeah.
Just so everybody's aware of that going forward.
Yeah.
And there, there is a separate twenty-foot utilities that there, from the right of extension to the...
Right, it's actually shading, I thought it was more towards east, but looking at it, it's almost on the west side of that power line. So it's still gonna be out of the road and everything, but it's a little closer than I thought of.
Up at the top, the north end of the concrete to stop twenty feet south of the south right-of-way line for Roland Road East, the intersection is to be completed with gravel.
And then paid when we get a, a asphalt contract.
Yeah, I think during our meeting with the contractors, Big Landon brought it up, that if we're gonna do it, we need to do it right.
You say we don't do it right.
No, I, I mean...
But you don't have to do it in concrete, if you, uh, like Mike said, if you're gonna get that, uh, sewer line across there, you're gonna tear up whatever you put in there. So you'd be better off to put in rock and some, uh, some asphalt pavement for now, and worry about it later.
There a sewer line up there?
There's not, but Mike said, was telling you that we needed to get one up there.
Is this where you were talking about getting sewer line, okay?
Yeah, it's actually gonna be right up that edge, right there, so, one of the considerations, it may be on the other side that we were looking at today. Blue Electric's line comes up there, and it looks like it dead ends, it actually has run from there all the way north to Mockville Road. That guide pole, and then the first pole, to straighten out this jog that's in here, if you did just stopping here, or doing whatever you're gonna have to, anytime you dig up for a sewer line, if we could get them to move that, give us a little more reason to come back and straighten this up so that it's like that.
Right.
That would make that intersection look a lot better, and we could do all that in asphalt for right now too.
Yeah.
If we can get it, I'll have to get some checks fit, see what the price would be on to move that, if they will move it, because it's just direct brary line, and it's not real deep. And right now, it's on the edge of the river going north, and I mean, on the edge. So, it might be something we wanna look at, I need, if, either way, I need to get the sewer line past that point, so we're not messing... the sewer line past that point, so we're not messing with it next time too.
It'd be, now would be the time to do it when they got all the world anyway.
Yeah, so if we could check on that, that may have a little bit of change right there in that intersection. That drains right there too, it's never been a problem. And they're showing a line coming from there over to the south and then back over to the west.
It doesn't drain that way now.
You know, so I don't think that'll be a problem, it'd sure make that look a lot better, maybe a little cheaper coming to that point.
Yeah. Who was that? I know we discussed both of these options a lot. Uh, the other, the top one, doing the, uh, kinda redirecting Roland Road and making it more smooth transition, making that more of an actual T intersection. I know we discussed that an awful lot. Uh, and this one here is kinda like an X intersection or something like that. Uh, we gotta make a decision on which one of those we want. And I know Don's thinking that we go with this one.
Is it possible, if you did go with that one, to just, like, where Mike marked on it?
Yeah.
Well, you got powerful wood there, that's gonna be a problem.
Yeah.
Right, that's who's lucky best when you're not doing anything.
Yeah, that's, this right here, if you actually look, I took those today. My tires are sitting pretty much in the road, but this road wraps right here.
Right.
And that line is basically right behind me. So, that's that side. On this side, you actually have a pole the same way, right here. And then over here, you jump the road all the way to the other side of it.
Right.
I'm not so sure we need to change all that. We still make it squared up and look like this without.
Yeah.
Without that much change, so.
But they were gonna do the other with gravel anyway, because the other roads are broken, so I don't see that it makes any difference. Because when that land is developed, you know, that, there is design on that, uh, on what used to be Randolph Road going behind CNR, that's not to say that it has to stay that way, and that would be up to the developers when that is, uh, when that property is built. So I mean, I think it's kinda silly to, to confine them, to tell them what they're gonna do now when we don't know. That's why I would prefer to do less in the intersection. And it cheapens our cost for now, and what we're trying to do is get this project to the point where we can actually afford it.
Does that, both of those designs you have right now, does it, if we line it up on the section line like, does that change that X intersection to be looking more like the other one, or is that?
No, because that's Roland Road, it's offset.
Yeah, it's too far north.
But if we fix that northwest corner, that would make it a little bit better.
Don't look ridiculous.
Well, I'm just guessing here, but ninety percent of your traffic that's gonna go if you, to the right.
Yes.
They're not, they're not gonna go down the other road anymore. You'll have, you might have some farmers go straight across, but.
There's gonna be very little traffic coming behind.
It's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be the right turn, going back to the east. Right? I mean, I'm saying ninety percent, that's where all your trucks are gonna be there, that's.
Depends which way you go, the lurk will take them.
Well.
That's gonna be your next problem.
Well, but that's, that's a problem that disappears after a while.
I said that after the first time.
Five to five to seven years.
Yeah. So. My next question. When they're up there working on that intersection, how's Chris gonna, how are we gonna get them people in and out of it?
We'll have to leave the lane open, just about to try to do it one side at a time, get it prepped, and then rock it in enough they can travel on that, get them in and out that way, it's the only way you will be.
I didn't know if you were gonna run through the lane fill up that way?
We can always do that. It's not always the best either, the time of year is not.
Yeah.
But I mean, they could do that, we could still work that out, but if that's working, we could definitely do that.
I would suspect that they would have done this kinda, something to follow or not so wet.
They'd have to understand ours, it would be open, depending on what's going on after that, but we could try to work with on that too.
I think the last question Don had was, uh, designing the road, Randolph Road is a thirty-eight foot concrete street with curb gutter, however, the base bid, middle twenty-four foot wide without curb gutter, and he wants, uh, option one, curb gutter to the north side of Remington Street, uh, curb gutter from the north side of Remington to north end of concrete, and then storm sewer work. So this will prevent the need for future engineering work to widen the street. Or the bids might be cheap enough to build either part of or all the full width. And Phil can do the storm work, discuss that. He'll save money on the project, which is a good thing. And it reduces the cost. Storm inlets could either be built now or added to where the street is widened. Since ultimate design is for a thirty-eight foot wide street with curb gutter, we don't really impact on any utilities now. Removing the center line of the section line reduces this impact. Uh, placing the center line on the section line requires five extra feet of right of way. However, removing the ditch takes away at least twenty-five feet of the required easement. This is more beneficial to the landowner. So, I think the, uh, engineers were talking about cutting a pretty wide ditch to get filled dirt so that they would have enough dirt to cover the culverts going around the center section. Uh, so, did we discuss that any further? You have questions on that?
Were either of those other options that Don was suggesting already laid out when we had the half dozen options in front of us, or are these in addition to?
There, we have an option.
So I thought we had an option.
We have an option for.
As a board, we voted no against.
Option one is a thirty-eight foot wide with curb and gutter. Um, option five would be thirty-eight foot wide curb and gutter through Remington, then twenty-four foot wide, uh, with seven foot gravel shoulders, which I don't think we were gonna do. Um, so, so we have those options already. I don't know if they're, they're actually in math plan form, but we have those.
Well, they were in front of us when we decided we were gonna go forward with what we're calling the base bid in the conversation today. So, is there anything new that we're being asked to vote on, or just reconsider? I guess that's what I.
Um, I think if you are okay when we go out to bid, we can add those options in, but we want to, just make sure that the board's direction is to say, we want this to be a twenty-four foot wide street, that is our bid. Then you can do these other two options. What would it cost us if we did curb and gutter, thirty-eight foot wide all the way up, and then?
Well, well, that's not quite right. We want the engineer to design it for a thirty-eight foot wide street.
Right.
With the base bid being the bid of twenty-four feet, and then they would bid it as option one and option two to, uh, build the curb and gutter, and we would see how much the twenty-four foot street is, how much it is if we add curb and gutter to the various portions up there. It's not the engineer telling us how much it's gonna cost, we wanna know what the contractors, it's gonna cost.
I'm not, I didn't say the engineers, I said when we go out to bid, that's what the bid would be for. The contractors can bid on those options.
Right.
And they can put a D-DOT in, or the city doing the.
The storm sewer.
Storm sewer.
Yes. If that is what.
I thought they weren't gonna have the city do much out there.
They're not gonna do the storm sewers up at the north side, but there is still a storm sewer on, that goes east and west.
Uh, halfway up?
Yes, that the city would do.
Through the swell.
Could do.
Through the swell.
We, we would have a contractor bid.
Yes.
What the city couldn't do.
We could deduct that out there, depending on the cost.
And if you put it in the bid that way, then you're gonna have to negotiate with the engineer for the already contractors and prices that they, it's already in there.
What would be the big difference in the engineering as far as the difference between a designed thirty-eight foot wide road and a designed twenty-four foot wide road? Just the length of your culverts and your stuff like that? Would we go ahead and do the dirt work for a thirty-eight foot wide road and then only pave twenty-four of that? I'm just, I'm asking that question because I really wanna know.
Yeah.
I thought, but what we would do?
Well.
The base would be.
The base would be the twenty-four foot wide, and that would have to have some ditches on it. So it, it would sort of be graded out for the full width, but not quite, because you've got those ditches to carry the water alongside the road. Uh, but if we only designed for, and what the engineer was going to do, uh, when he told her twenty-four foot wide, he was not even gonna worry about the thirty-eight foot wide width. But then if you, uh, come back several years later, you wanna put the, uh, extra width on and bring this up to our standards, then you'd need another set of engineering plans. And that's what I wanna avoid. Why should we pay for three sets of engineering plans? We shouldn't pay for two.
Well, we've already discussed this, but those other first engineering plans were outdated and.
They weren't outdated. That's crap.
Yes, they were.
Don, they're the experts telling us otherwise. Can we leave that one behind us and stop rehashing that thing about the first set of plans?
Well, you got it wrong, but I mean, I, and I believe.
There was an expert, there was an expert engineer in here who said they were outdated and were not viable for the plan period.
Yes.
Why don't we move past that, and when we've spent half an hour talking about?
Let's not spend, let's not get an engineering design a third time, and let's get it right this time.
Let's move on.
Yeah. Move on. All right, anything else for the, uh, public hearing? There are nothing for those of public hearing. Do you wanna address the, the railing, uh, package?
That's, that's what I mentioned earlier, was that, that's a recommendation from the board of adjustments.
Okay. Action agenda, finance and permits and licensing, or financing schedule, is that right?
Correct.
Permits and licensing, amending section one dash twenty-five of the Centrale City Code to include an annual fee for low-speed vehicles, golf carts and utility vehicles, and to allow for operation of utility vehicles on city streets, roads, or alleys. This is an ordinance that requires two readings. I think we've had an awful lot of discussion with this. And anybody have any questions over the version of the ordinance that we have in front of us? Right, want to leave with the individual's motion, please? Bill number, please?
Two-two-seven-one.
I move that bill number two-two-seven-one be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second the bill number twenty-two-seven-one be given its first reading by title only, follows the fairer stat.
Aye.
Post. Continue, please. An ordinance to amend section eighteen dash twenty-one of the C- City of Centrale Code to include an annual fee for low-speed vehicles, golf carts, and utility vehi- utility vehicles, and to allow for the operation of utility vehicles on city streets, roads, or alleys in the city of Centrale Missouri. I move that bill number two-two-seven-one be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second the bill number twenty-two-seven-one be given its second reading by title only, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Continue, please. An ordinance to amend section eighteen dash twenty-one of the City of Centrale Code to include an annual fee for low-speed vehicles, golf carts, and utility vehicles, and to allow for the operation of utility vehicles on city streets, roads, or alleys in the city of Centrale Missouri.
I have a question, just real quick. I'm sorry, you keep saying eighteen-twenty-one, is it eighteen-twenty-one or eighteen-twenty-five? Because our paperwork says eighteen-twenty-five.
Eighteen-twenty-five.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to make sure.
Eighteen-twenty-five. Sorry, my dead collective.
That's okay, Jim, I just wanted to make sure.
I move that bill number two-two-seven-one be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion to second the bill number twenty-two-seven-one be adopted by roll call vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Roll call vote, please, Karen.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-two-seven-one passes now becomes ordinance number.
Two-nine-nine-nine.
Thank you. Do you like to do a dance over there?
Say thank you.
You're welcome. All right, legal, amending section thirty dot one dash eighteen of Centrale City Code to accept Randolph Road from, to accept Randolph Road from the requirements of the section regarding streets and alleys' design requirements. This is, the ordinance requires two readings. Alderman Wilkins, would you introduce this one, please?
Uh, bill number, please?
Two-two-seven-two.
Bill number two-two-seven-two be given its first read by title only.
Second.
Motion to second the bill number twenty-two-seven-two be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Continue, please.
An ordinance to amend section three-zero dot one dash one-eight of the City of Centrale Code to accept out Randolph Road from the requirements of section three-zero dot one dash one-eight regarding streets and alleys' design requirements, including curb and gutter in the city of Centrale, Missouri. Would the bill number two-two-seven-two be given its second read by title only?
Second.
I have a motion to second the bill number twenty-two-seven-two be given its second reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Continue, please.
An ordinance to amend section three-zero dot one dash one-eight of the City of Centrale Code to accept out Randolph Road from the requirements of section three-zero dot one dash one-eight regarding streets and alleys' design requirements, including curb and gutter in the city of Centrale, Missouri. I move the bill number two-two-seven-two be adopted by roll call vote.
Aye.
I have a motion to second the bill number twenty-two-seven-two be adopted by a roll call vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Roll call vote, please, Karen.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-two-seven-two passes now becomes ordinance number.
Two-nine-nine-nine.
Next is, amending section twenty-six dash one sixteen dot one of the Centrale City Code concerning provisions of the levelized budget billing program.
We talked about this at a committee meeting.
Thank you all.
It's just, um, any people can sign up for budget billing at any point in time, just in order to make it a lot easier on the city office staff, we can, we just reconcile it one time a year instead of two times a year. The program handles it one time a year better than it will multiple times a year.
Okay. Any questions? Alderman Rogers, would you introduce this one, please?
Bill number?
Two-two-seven-three.
I move that bill number two-two-seven-three in ordinance, amending section twenty-six dash one-one-six point one of the City Code of this.
You're gonna make a motion to.
Oh.
Do the first reading by title.
Move that bill number.
Sorry.
You gotta start all over, don't you? Move that bill number twenty-two-seven-three be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second the bill number twenty-two-seven-three be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Continue, please.
Move that bill number twenty-two-seven-three, an ordinance amending section twenty-six dash one-one-six point one of the City Code of the City of Centrale, Missouri, concerning provisions of the levelized electric utility billing payment program. Move that bill number twenty-two-seven-three be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second the bill number twenty-two-seven-three be given its second reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Continue, please.
Move that bill number twenty-two-seven-three, an ordinance amending section twenty-six dash one-one-six point one of the City Code of the City of Centrale, Missouri, concerning provisions of the levelized electric utility billing payment program. Move that bill number twenty-two-seven-three be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion to second the bill number twenty-two-seven-three be adopted by a roll call vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Roll call vote, please, Karen.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Rogers? Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-two-seven-three passes now becomes ordinance number. All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-two-seven-three passes now becomes ordinance number.
Three-zero-zero-zero.
Right. Adopting a formal written grievance policy in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act and implementing Section five-oh-four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three as amended. This is a resolution, require one reading.
The next three, uh, next resolution of the two ordinances have to do with our CDVG grant. This is language that, that CDVG requires. And so it's a resolution, but it affects our federal funding, so. We happen to have this one filed. The one after that is a contract with the G E H M Corporation for the asbestos inspections for the Narragansett Building and the Greenhouse and Star Trekking Building. Back in two thousand seventeen, when we first went out for, um, to try to get this grant, we went through in our pre-process, and this is the company, the corporation that we chose at the time. So I contacted them and they will be able to go ahead and get that started, um, in the next week or so, uh, to get the asbestos inspections going, so. And then the last one is our contract with Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission for their payment, for their help as the grant administrators.
All right. Any other questions? Alderman Magley, would you introduce this one, please?
Bill number?
Two-two-seven-four.
Move that bill number two-two-seven-four be given.
Its first and only.
First reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-four be given its first and only reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue, please.
We've created a resolution entitled Resolution of the City of Centrale, Missouri Adopting Formal Written Grievance Procedure or Policy in accordance with the Americans with the Disability Act, ADA, and implementing Section five-oh-four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three. I don't mean to move that bill number two-two-seven-four be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-four be adopted by a roll call vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-two-seven-four passing now becomes resolution number.
Nineteen dash zero-two.
All right. Alderman Borman, would you introduce this one, please?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Let me read it first.
What?
I'll just read it. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the G E H M Corporation for asbestos inspection at three dilapidated commercial buildings inside the city limits.
Does all buildings have asbestos in them, or are we just having an inspection?
We just have to have inspection.
If they have inspection, it clears the asbestos.
So we're pretty, we're pretty clear there, they don't, hopefully. Does it, doesn't that get really expensive?
Yes, it will get expensive.
It does.
Asbestos cleanup is very expensive. Our hope and prayer should be that when they inspect, they clean up there.
But they're, I assume they're looking for more than just asbestos, and hopefully for any happens.
Won't be no more expensive than building street.
Yeah. Alderman Borman, would you introduce this one, please?
Uh, bill number, please?
Two-two-seven-five.
I move that bill number two-two-seven-five be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-five be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue, please.
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor of the City of Centrale, Missouri to execute contracts with the GEM Corporation of Boonville, Missouri for asbestos inspection at three dilapidated commercial structures within the Centrale City Limits. I move the bill number two-two-seven-five be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-five be given its second reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue, please.
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor of the City of Centrale, Missouri to execute contract with GEM Corporation of Boonville, Missouri for asbestos inspection at three dilapidated commercial structures within the City of Centrale City Limits. I move that bill number two-two-seven-five be adopted by a roll call vote.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-five be adopted by a roll call vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Borman?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-two-seven-five passes now becomes ordinance number.
Three-zero-zero-one.
Forty-seven.
Next one is authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission for administrative services related to a community development block grant. The ordinance requires two readings.
Bill number?
Two-two-seven-six.
Move that bill number two-two-seven-six be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-six be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor of the City of Centrale, Missouri to execute a contract with the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission of Ashland, Missouri for administrative services relating to a community development block grant project. Move that bill number two-two-seven-six be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-six be given its second reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue, please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Centrale, Missouri to execute a contract with the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission of Ashland, Missouri for administrative services relating to a community development block grant project. Move that bill number two-two-seven-six be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-six be adopted by a roll call vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yeah.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-two-seven-six passes now becomes ordinance number three-zero-zero-two. Purchasing, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for twelve months with Central Concrete. This ordinance requires two reasons. We talked about this last week. Anything else you want to say about that, or?
This was just a low bid for years worth of concrete.
Take them out of any yard?
He did say it would come out. If they're short there, they can get it through there.
Or roll call.
Yeah.
But just to confirm, this doesn't tie us with anything that's being contracted out? This is only direct projects that we're managing.
Alderman Lee, would you introduce this one, please? Well, I don't know, so. Alderman Wilkins?
Yeah, bill number.
Thank you.
Two-two-seven-seven.
Move that bill number two-seven-seven be given its first read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-seven be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue, please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Centrale, Missouri to execute a contract for twelve months of central concrete of Columbia, Missouri for material pricing. I move that bill number two-two-seven-seven be given its second read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-seven be given its second reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Centrale, Missouri to execute a contract for twelve months with Central Concrete of Columbia, Missouri for material pricing. I move that bill number two-two-seven-seven be adopted by roll call vote.
Have a motion to second that bill number twenty-two-seven-seven be adopted by a roll call vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-two-seven-seven passes now becomes ordinance number.
Three-zero-zero-three.
And then what happened, new business?
Do we have a timeline on the building being turned down yet?
Are we? Lincoln said that all the paperwork has been turned in. And we're hopeful to have it completely poured down before anger fest.
Still, I'll roll through these inspections.
Yeah.
They're gonna go through the inspections, that's what they're gonna do.
Yeah. I was about to walk through.
The asbestos.
Yeah, the asbestos inspection. And we had that done a few years ago, didn't we?
I don't think it was done. I think that it was just the R F T for it, and then we chose the contractor. Because they didn't have the other stuff, anything. You had to fully do it twice.
Have we got somebody already set to go with elimination?
No.
No, we've got a lot to do on that.
After we get that inspection done.
Yeah. Once the inspection's done. If, if they find anything, it definitely has to be rolled up into the bid. So, the removal before demolition, so. Yeah.
They, they used to do above the ground, right, on the inspection? There's nothing, there's nothing.
I don't think they drill or anything like that, there are no ones that.
That inspection, the contract there said they checked for asbestos. It's anything else in the wording on that contract.
Correct.
And I would assume they didn't go forward with it because it had a five-year agreement based on if it was the same agreement. If the wording was the same as it was in twenty-seventeen, so.
All right.
Better off looking for less of a finance.
All right, new business. Like to appoint Marilyn Dick as the Assistant Municipal Court Clerk. Municipal Ordinance Violation Bureau Clerk. This requires a motion. Have a motion to sec, accept the mayor's appointment of Marilyn Dick to Assistant Municipal Court Clerk and Municipal Ordinance Violation Bureau Clerk.
Put that on the board.
I know, right? So have a motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. I'm looking for a couple of additional appointees. Was it the Board of Adjustment?
Port Planting and.
Planting and.
And Tree Board.
Tree Board. Those will need, uh, new appointees. Check with the, uh.
Who's going off the planters, though?
Hardin Million.
Hardin Million.
I was asking if we could put on that.
Right, we asked if he'd like to be reappointed or he declined. Then Rick Cortini, he's declined to be reappointed to the Tree Board, so. I'll be looking for, uh, you know, one of those, according to the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, I'll be able to find somebody to support that much.
Yeah.
Somebody right there.
Right there. Good.
Yeah. Good for making work of law.
There you are, you said people never mend.
Um, it's been quite a while. Armor Day? Armor Day.
There we are, there we are.
We're a tree city USA for like twenty-seven, twenty-eight years in a row. So, pretty awesome.
Oh, we haven't amended the list of approved trees, and I've never.
That's because it was so good to begin.
And we've been busy enough trimming and cutting down dead trees.
Yes, yeah. We should probably take ashtray off.
Well, it's, it's so long.
Yeah. And I do know that the work that Brick Brother did in trimming our trees really helped save us a lot. For the last ice excavades. So, we'll keep, uh, we'll keep on trimming trees. City Minister?
Reports in the packet, do you have any questions, Alia?
Just like to give you a date as to when the toll from service.
No, the last time I talked to them, they were trying to give us a brand-new phone number. They would say no. So you don't want brand-new phone numbers, so.
I will, I'll call him tomorrow. I missed calling him later, I forgot.
City Attorney, do you have anything?
Yeah, so I have to make sure the board is aware of it. Um, in March, we will not have municipal courts, so everybody is aware. Uh, there are two months out of the year that we don't have municipal court, and March is one of them, so just kind of making sure everybody is aware of that. Um, I also sent Heather, um, a packet and a report about how cities might start to address and take a look at the new medical marijuana changes in the laws that are forthcoming, and kind of what cities should be expecting and what they should be looking at in terms of like planning for the implementation of and rollout of medical marijuana and how the city may want to address that. And I know that Heather and I believe Chief Fius are also participating um, in a program this week to kind of further expand on that. So that's something the city is gonna want to start thinking about sooner rather than later and kind of looking at the various ordinances and or changes to the code we might need to take on those like the planning and zoning side, other ordinances in terms of licensing and possible changes to the criminal code at the city level to address some of those changes coming as a result of that, so. That's something that I, again, I think we're gonna be working on in the city probably over the next year as that continues to roll out. And Heather, is the board aware of our successful appeal on behalf of the city?
Yes.
Okay, well then outside of that, so that's really all that the city attorney has to report of those items.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I did forget that Antara will also be in on that webinar that MML is putting on on Thursday, and then Friday I will be out at the GFOA Conference of Columbia, Government Finance or Finance Officers Association. It's just one day. And I will be out, I will not be here till the next board of order meeting, I'll be at the New Corp Institute and Spring Institute, um, in Columbia.
Okay. All right. I have a, as mayor arises, but does anybody else have any? Yes, I want to. I'd like to raise the possibility to look at adding additional diagonal parking, parking on West Singleton, where it goes from diagonal to parallel to like one block.
For a block or for half a block?
To be a half a block?
Is that a half a block?
Probably, yeah, behind.
Between the alley.
From the alley to Hickman.
For a pit.
Yeah, a half.
So it's something we need to. Get our, uh, ordinance.
I can get some, um, measurements and we can see how many additional parking spaces that would provide. Have that ready for the next committee meeting.
All right, I was gonna tell you that I had a conversation with the gentleman that was here in your committee's conference.
Oh, yeah?
Did he email me about?
Oh, did he, okay. All right. Um, as I was in Jefferson City last week for the legislative conference, as the vice president of the Missouri Municipal, they asked me to kind of fill in because the president wasn't there, so I was able to introduce Senator David Schatz for dinner on the last two things. And he talked about, um, Prop D not passing and some of the different things that the governor is trying to do to address the transportation issue in the state of Missouri. And then the next morning, Wednesday morning breakfast, I was able to introduce the governor, who kind of expanded on that, and he talked about the, uh, bridge initiative that he's going out for, uh, bonds, to sell bonds for maintaining bridges. I think it was to the tune of about three hundred million dollars. If you know anything about fixing, uh, bridges, three hundred million dollars, probably not gonna go. probably not gonna go too far towards, uh, a whole lot of bridges. Most of those bridges that are in very poor condition need to be completely replaced. And he's not talking about doing those, uh, just the major, major roadways. It's, he talks about doing those out in the rural communities, uh, not just focusing on the major thoroughfare. He also indicated that he was traveling around the country, attending other governors' meetings, and, uh, bringing back to the state of Missouri things that, uh, would help, uh, you know, help Missouri move forward. Then after that, I talked, uh, introduced, um, Representative Hattigan. He is the chairperson for the Municipal, um, Municipal Caucus at the State Capitol. And he talked about things that, uh, would help cities and municipalities move forward. After that, um, went to a Missouri Mayor's United for Progress meeting, which is about sixty-five mayors in the state of Missouri, that, uh, we met and had a great discussion about, um, the Better Together Initiative in the St. Louis area. Anybody know what Better Together is? Okay. So, kind of bring it home, that'll be like the City of Columbia, um, making all of Boone County the city, the municipality. So, they would basically assume Centaria, Hollsville, Spurgeon, Ashland, Hartsburg, all of those will become part of the greater Boone County led by Columbia.
Oh, oh.
So, the initiative, the initiative is to take all of the seventy-three municipalities in St. Louis County and St. Louis City, and make them into one giant metropolis. Okay? Well, Rex Thingfield is the funding behind this initiative. It started about five years ago, and they are trying to get a statewide vote to pass that initiative to allow the municipalities to all gather under one huge umbrella. The Missouri Municipal League and the Mayor's, Missouri Mayor's United for Progress have both come out vehemently against those, that initiative, because it is a local issue. The Missouri State Constitution already has a provision that allows the municipalities in St. Louis area to, uh, put together a board of freeholders to discuss that information. And those nineteen, uh, I think eight of them will come from the city, eight of them will come from the county, and then the governor points one. I think it's a total of eighteen, I don't know what the exact makeup is, but the governor points one. And they meet, and they discuss it, see what the best option would be for those cities, and then, then they take it to both of the local municipalities. One of the problems with having a statewide vote, the people that are not in the St. Louis area are not gonna get the full picture of what's gonna happen when and if that passes. If that passes, the city mayor, the mayor of the city of St. Louis would become the mayor of that huge metropolis. And then the county, the county commissioner, whoever's in charge of St. Louis County, would become the second-hand commander. Those would be two people not elected, that would just be automatically appointed. And those people would appoint the board to run the whole operation. Additionally, they would assume all of the assets of the police departments, make one huge police department. They would assume all of the assets and equipment for the, uh, utilities, make one huge utility department. Some of those municipalities have built brand-new, uh, police stations and brand-new public works buildings. All that would now become the property of St. Louis Metropolis, and I don't know what they're gonna call it. Yet, they would divide it up into a certain number of municipal districts. And each one of those municipal districts would be responsible for paying all the bills that they still owe. So, St. Louis City would create, you know, all this equipment, but the existing municipalities would have to pay a bill. The Better Together is going around the state, asking for signatures amongst all the municipalities, trying to get it put onto the statewide ballot.
You know why they wanna do that?
What's that?
You know why they wanna get a statewide vote on it?
Because it, it'll never...
Because it'll never pass in the state law.
Because it'll pass in the local municipalities, in the local district.
Statewide, the big cities will vote for it, cause they...
Well... Yeah, the thing is, is, you know, they are not touching the fire departments, and they're not touching the school system, because those unions are so powerful that it would fight it, and they would lose. But, they did say that if this passes, that's gonna be their next step, is to assume the fire department, the fire districts, and the school districts. And who's to say that, uh, you know, in the year down the road, Springfield will encompass everybody in Greene County? Or Columbia wouldn't encompass everybody in Boone County? And it's just a, uh...
Sure would use a number of municipalities, right?
It would. But yet, all taxes from all of the municipalities would go to the central government there, and they would divvy up to whoever, and it takes away local controls. Okay? So, just when, uh, you know, you're talking to your constituents, um, you know, pass that information out that, you know, this Better Together is not really what it's called.
A proportionate share.
On the, uh, medical marijuana that, uh, Heather discussed, well, the Missouri Municipal League Regional Meeting is going to be hosted by Centaria on May twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay? And we've asked the Missouri Municipal League to make that a topic of our discussion, what the current laws and regulations are gonna be for medical marijuana. Uh, we had a presentation at the, uh, MML board meeting that, uh, there's several different applications that you can apply for. It's gonna be self-funded, so it's not gonna come out of the general revenue. Currently, I don't have my notes with me, but, uh, I think there's only gonna be three hundred or so. I may, uh, quote me on the numbers, but, uh, there's gonna be a certain number of growing operations approved. There's gonna be a certain number of distribution outlets approved. And everyone that is medically qualified to have, they'll, they'll get a card, and then they'll have to get that card renewed every year. Each level of their operation will be given a license. I think one of the application fees is ten thousand dollars, and, uh, another of the application fees is six thousand dollars. And, um, they currently have in excess, an excess amount of applications from what they're gonna authorize as the approved sites. So... So, there's, there's your, uh, legislative update in, uh, recent side discussion.
Make a motion, will you turn?
Have a motion to second...